And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight at City Council on March the 7th, 2023. I'd like to call on Ms. Amy Craig, Councilman, for the invocation.
Thank you. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are truly grateful for this opportunity that we have together this evening for this meeting. We are thankful for all the many blessings we've received, especially thankful for our safety and protection during the recent storm. At this time, we ask you to please watch over us and bless us that we'll be filled with thy Spirit, that we'll be able to make good decisions. And we also ask you to especially watch over our first responders, our military, and all those who put themselves in harm's way. We're especially thankful at this time for our public works and for our linemen that have worked countless hours to restore power and to help keep us comfortable and safe. At this time, we also ask you to watch over our city and the citizens that live here, and we ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call on the clerk, Ms. Chrissy, to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Marsh.
Present.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox. Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell. And Councilmember Handy.
Present.
All right, we have nine, so we do have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to call on number five, awards and recognitions, United Way, from Ms. Whitney Stewart and Mr. Lucas Stagner. Would you please come?
Mayor, City Council, as you know, we held our recently tenured United Way Penney Row campaign over the weekend last, like, two weeks ago, and you all had a committee of the whole meeting, and we're unable to get it. What we want to do tonight is recognize...
Sorry about that. We just wanted to make the City of Hopkinsville aware and congratulate you all for winning the largest United Way of the Penney Row Award, and that's the People Helping People Award. And that's the, like I said, the largest award that United Way actually gives away. This year, the City of Hopkinsville, which includes the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, and the administration offices, raised a total of $65,297.92. That's an increase of 23.64% from last year, and we just want to say thank you all to the City of Hopkinsville and, of course, the employees of the City of Hopkinsville.
Thank you, sir.
We also recognize that night in the Government Division, the Chairman Award, based on largest total giving, went to the Hopkinsville Fire Department with a total of $43,731.82. And the Spirit Award, based on the largest increase, went to the Hopkinsville Police Department with a 205.5% increase. So we want to congratulate them both again, too. And the People Helping People Award is out in the lobby for you all to see.
And we just want to say thank you. Whitney and I have been co-chairs for the 2022-23 campaign this year. We just want to say thank you all. We, also present tonight, is the President of the, I'm correcting, the President of the Board, and that's Tab Brockman. We appreciate him this year. And, of course, the Director, Executive Director of the United Way of the Penney Row, and that's Ms. Betsy Bond. So we, again, appreciate the City of Hopkinsville. We would carry the award in, but it's real heavy, and we're not carrying it too many more times.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Hopkinsville Police Department on Captain DeArmond.
Good evening. It's my honor to introduce the newest Hopkinsville Police Officer. It's Officer Christopher Pacheco. He was born in Florida. He's the youngest of three children. He has two older sisters. He joined the Marines at the age of 18 after graduating high school. After he completed that, he moved on to the Army, and after the completion of his military career with the Army, him and his family moved to Clarksville, where he decided to apply at our agency so he could continue service. Tonight, Captain Rodriguez has the pleasure of penning Officer Pacheco.
I state your name.
I, Christopher Pacheco.
A citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform, to the best of your abilities, the duties of police officer for the City of Hopkinsville of Kentucky, and that it, that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and so help me God. I do.
Amy. I wouldn't say nothing. You sneezed or whatever. I didn't, you didn't hear me. It's like, I thought you looked back at me. I was like... Oh, yes. Until the snow comes next week.
Alrighty.
I'll stop.
Thank you to the Hopkinsville Police Department and Officer Pacheco. We move now to item number six, public comments. I ask everyone to keep them to three minutes. Please state your name and your address. Thank you. Any public comments?
Hi, my name is Amy Strickland. I live at 135 South Sunset Circle. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
And Councilmembers. I just wanted to make you all aware that cities around us do allow urban chickens to be kept in their yard. Oak Grove, Clarksville, Nashville, Bowling Green, Madisonville, Louisville, Lexington, Paducah, all of those big cities do. And I do believe that Hopkinsville residents should be allowed to as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland. Any other public comments? Anyone else? Please step up. Alrighty, we see a number. We'll move into item number seven, Mayor's Comments. Thank you, Ms. Strickland, for coming up and speaking again on the chickens. I do have a folder here with them in it with the surrounding cities from Clarksville, Owensboro, Nashville, Paducah, Madisonville, Bowling Green, and so on. We are looking into this. Chickens have become a very hot topic right now. And, but no, we are looking into this. We are not taking this lightly. It is something that the citizens of Hopkinsville are asking about. So we, as a council, me as the mayor, are looking into this. We are going to have this on Committee of the Whole coming up. Me and Councilman Keel's talked about it. So we are moving forward with this. So we want you to know we are talking about it, and we are moving forward. So we do want the citizens to know we are not just letting you sit on the back burner. We are moving forward on the chicken ordinance, because as it states right now, we're not allowing chickens, but it will be, we're doing a lot of investigating and see where we're at. Alright, that's on part of that, but I would like to thank the Hopkinsville Fire Department, Police Department, HES, Penney Row Electric, and Public Works. Thank y'all so very much for last Thursday, not Thursday, Friday, and over the weekend. Every one of you put in a lot of overtime and got our streets back open, our power back on, and I, my hat's off to you, and I commend you greatly. Thank you very much on that. On the other thing, we have the International Festival coming up with the Sportsplex that Tab Nims been talking about, and it's on the 24th and 25th of March. So please come out. We're going to have the food truck and multi-language stories time, tent performances, and vendors. So please come out to the Sportsplex on the 24th and 25th of March. Don't forget the Rotary Auction coming up in April. Let's get out and support them, do our part to help get our young people the money they need to go to college. And we will move on now to number eight, reports, officers, committees, guest speakers. And we have none of that. We move to item nine, approval of minutes. Ms. Chrissy, for the special call meeting on February 16th.
Yes, we've got the February 16th minutes. We'll need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Item B under nine is February 21st, regular meeting.
They'll be...
Second.
Second. Alright. Ms. Natasha and Amy. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, moving right along. Number 10, ordinance 03-2023, fire substation five bond issue. Ms. Chrissy.
An ordinance of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, general obligation bond, Series 2023A, and the approximate aggregate principal amount of $2,605,000, subject to a permitted adjustment, increasing the principal amount by up to $265,000 or decreasing the principal amount by any amount, for the purpose of financing the cost of the acquisition of a parcel of real estate consisting of approximately 10 acres of land with a single-story industrial building to be converted into a new firehouse, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers of the city to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, establishing a bond payment fund for the bonds, affirming the maintenance of the existing sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bid of the purchaser for the bonds, and repealing any inconsistent ordinances. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows: This ordinance authorizes the issuance by the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, of a series of general obligation bonds designated as City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, general obligation bond, Series 2023A, for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition of a parcel of real estate located at 101 Walton Way, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, 42240, consisting of approximately 10 acres of land with a single-story industrial building to be converted into a firehouse, paying capitalized interest on the bonds if desirable, paying all or a portion of the cost of credit enhancement for the bonds, if any, and paying all or a portion of the cost of issuance of the bonds. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, and the application of the proceeds of the bonds for the establishment of a bond payment fund, for the continuation of the city's previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on March 1, 2024, and each March 1 thereafter through March 1, 2033. The bonds pledge the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city, and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal and the interest on the bonds, subject to certain credits as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance. The sale of the bonds is contingent upon the satisfaction of the requirements and conditions of the city regarding the project as required by KRS Section 83A060. The following Section 8 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 8, general obligation, the bonds shall be full general obligations of the city and shall, and the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment of the bonds and the interest thereon during the period the bonds are outstanding. There shall be, and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, as and when due, it being hereby found and determined that the current tax rates of the city are within applicable limitations. The tax shall be and is hereby ordered to be computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and to be collected by the same officers in the same manner, and at the same time, the taxes for general purposes for each of the years are certified, extended, and collected. The direct tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items, and for the full amount thereof, provided, however, that in each year to the full, to the extent the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds and are appropriated for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated. We need a motion.
So move. Second.
Second.
Alrighty, and I need you to call the roll for that.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
And Councilmember Smiley. I missed Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously on second reading.
Thank you. Alrighty, B, ordinance 04-2023, East 9th Street, property rezoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their January 30, 2023 meeting for City Council to approve rezoning application R2311, and whereas City Council concurs that recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan, the existing classification is inappropriate and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows: Pursuant to KRS 100.211, the City of Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services, recommendation dated January 30, 2023, approximately 5.099 acres of property located at 1618 East 9th Street, as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby rezoned from I-1 Light Industrial District to B-2 General Business District. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion.
Second.
Got it. Mr. Don Marsh and Amy Craig.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
And Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
C, ordinance 05-2023, operational budget amendment, first reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows: By summary, Section 1 of Ordinance 21, 2022, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 22, and ending June 30, 2022, as amended as follows: Revenues, general fund, $42,808,526; municipal road aid fund, $660,000; prior year revenues, $630,471; total revenues, $44,098,997; expenses, general fund, $43,438,997; municipal road aid fund, $660,000; total expenses, $44,098,997. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the Office of the Understate City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
So move. Second.
Right. Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Alright, that passes unanimously on first reading.
D, ordinance 06-2023, 2223 capital budget amendment.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows: That Section 1 of Ordinance 2022, adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023, capital equipment and property replacement budget, is amended as follows: Revenues, transfer from general fund, $1,607,438; transfer from general fund wins additional insurance premium, $109,804; transfer from general fund, police department, $170,068; prior year capital reserves, $70,722; total capital revenues, $1,958,032; expenses, information technology, $100,000; police department, $500,068; fire department, $292,000; city maintenance, $214,826; service center, $127,000; parks and recreation, $90,000; sportsplex, $65,000; agencies, $12,500; buildings and properties, $556,638; total capital expenses, $1,958,032; surplus, $4,732. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Any and all existing ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So move. Second.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
And Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Alrighty. Item E, ordinance 07-2023, alcohol beverage control ministry.
An ordinance amending Section 111.03, alcoholic beverage control administrator, compensation of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows: Section 111.03 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows: 111.03, City Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator, Deputy City Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator, compensation. There is hereby, there is created for the city the position and office of City Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator pursuant to KRS 241.160. The salary for the position and office is hereby established and fixed in the sum of $200 per month. Further, a Deputy City Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator position is hereby created. The salary for the position is hereby established and fixed in the sum of $100 per month. Any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So move.
Second.
Got it. Don?
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy. Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Alright, Mayor, that passes unanimously on first reading.
Thank you. Item 11, municipal order, A, municipal orders 09-2023, Economic Development Fund Expenditure.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby designates and authorizes up to $61,200 of economic development funds be used for the design of the rail spur and commerce park two.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Travis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Item B, municipal order 10-2023, surplus real estate.
Whereas the City of Hopkinsville owns certain parcels of real estate which contain no structures and all are vacant lots, and whereas said real estate is of no value to the city, and the city incurs the expense of mowing and maintaining said vacant lots, now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the following real estate as surplus: 502 West First Street, Bahama Drive, 618 Cypress Street, 614 Cypress Street, Faulkner Street, 721 and 725 Howell Street, 729 Howell Street, and 730 East Second Street, McGowan Street, Lot 21, Oakhurst, 1808 Oak Street. City Council further authorizes the mayor to dispose of said properties by methods available in KRS 82.083.
So moved.
Travis? Which one of you?
Whatever.
Travis and Steve, come on. Alrighty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, moving on to item C, municipal order 11-2023, 409 East 7th Street, property transfer.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the attached deed transferring property located at 409 East 7th Street to the City of Hopkinsville.
So move. Second.
Matthew and Steve. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Municipal order 12-2023, tiebreaker management contract. You do have it in front of you.
I have a comment I'd like to make, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Need a motion.
I'm going to comment first. I did not receive this until 1 o'clock today.
No, you did not.
So I have not had time to look at it, and I have a feeling my fellow council members are in the same position that I'm in. So I would like to take this off the agenda and put it on the next meeting where we'll have time to do our due diligence.
Okay, the reason that it was slowed up and was not in your package is the attorney had to go over the contract. We could send it back to their attorneys and move on. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, we just received this Friday, so we have made the revisions. What we did, the contract that was proposed, I've reviewed that. It's my understanding that it is time sensitive because we've got to get the water park open. So we were under a time crunch. We've done the best to put our old contract terms in this contract. And I think Tab can probably answer any questions on the terms and, and the bid, but the, he may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it is time sensitive and that two weeks may cause a problem with getting this ready for the park development.
My issue's simple. It's 13 pages. I haven't read it, you know. I'll make a motion that we put this to another meeting, however y'all want to do it, I don't care, but I don't feel like I can vote on this without looking at it. It's not fair to my people I represent, so.
What will that, what will that do? Yeah, get up there. Have a motion.
Have a motion. Have a motion, Chairman.
Just one second.
The time sensitivity on it is purely with hiring employees. Um, that's really the, the, the issue here. Uh, obviously the YMCA is out soliciting lifeguards and front office personnel and we want to be as competitive as we can with that. That's, that's really simply the issue to it.
I mean, that's fair, but I still haven't read it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can answer. It is very, I can tell you this and I totally understand and kind of expected this, this to happen. It's very much in line with the contract we've had. It is a different model for it simply in that we, it is a fee plus cost model. So it's, it's a little different. What that means is they'll have a management fee and this first year it's sixty-five thousand dollars. And then they have broken out all the fees that will be in line with that, but we'll be able to keep a closer handle on the fees and actually see what's, what it costs to run the water park. So at first we kind of thought, nah, we didn't know if we want to do that. But the more Mike and I talked about it, we thought it's actually a good look for us. Could really, we really get to see how much it costs to run the water park and, and then they have the management fee.
So let me ask you this, Tab.
Sure.
If we could move this until Saturday. So I make the motion that we move this item to our meeting Saturday if we have to open council, close, whatever. I'm not sure how you do that.
We don't, we don't vote on anything in that meeting.
We don't vote on anything. Do we have a second on the motion for Chuck?
I've got a comment.
All right, what's your comment, sir?
My, my comment on that is where, where Chuck, where I agree with you on that. I also understand on, on some of these things that we do, they are time sensitive. Um, I, I received this same time everybody else did.
Yes.
Um, I took a look at it, kind of, I'm not going to lie, hit the high points, checked over the numbers. And the first thing I did, I turned around and contacted Tab and, and said, you know, hey, you, you, you've been involved in the water park a lot more time than I have. And at the end of the day, if we're going to hire these guys to run this thing, I've got to trust their opinion. I've got to trust our city attorney. Um, and, and I don't want to put Tab and Mike and, and that crew in a situation that, that we're going to push anything further behind. Um, at the end of the day, I don't write contracts for a living. You, you, you may or may not. Um, but, you know, I did, I did go over it and I did call. I took the opportunity because we did have five hours before the meeting and I did take that time. I did have some questions. I reached out to Tab. He was very responsive and I got all my questions answered in that time. So, you know, that's why in what's best for the water park and what's best to, to move forward, sometimes we don't have a lot of time. You know, that, that happens to us quite a bit, but I, I, you know, I didn't have an issue using my time to contact Tab. That's why I kind of think we need to go ahead and vote on this tonight so we can get moving and get forward. That thing's been closed a year. I don't want anybody to come back and say I held the closing or the opening of it up when we spent all this money on it just because I didn't read a contract that, you know, this, our, our city attorney likes and our entire recreation department.
Do we have a second on Chuck's motion?
I, I don't want to give any reflection on Tab or Mike or any of the city staff. This is, this is no reflection on them. Certainly trust our attorney and the great job that he always does. So these comments can be made in a proper way. I'll second his, I'll second his motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We do a roll call.
Councilmember Marsh. Okay, the motion.
Yes.
That I have is defer this to a future meeting.
Right.
Sa- is Saturday or we need to clarify that. Is that your motion? You said two different things.
If, if there's a, if not a problem doing it Saturday, I'll, I'll, my motion's Saturday.
Okay, so the motion is to defer this to Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Marsh, yes. Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
No.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lineberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
No.
Councilmember Handy. Councilmember Francis.
Natasha.
Councilmember Francis.
No.
All right, that motion fails five to nine. So we are ready to read the municipal order if you're ready.
Read, read your order, please.
Okay. Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the attached contract between the City of Hopkinsville and Club and Leisure Partners LLC. So moved.
Second.
Amy and Travis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I've got one abstention. And did you vote no?
No.
Yes. Okay.
Good.
One abstention and one no. All right, that passes.
And Mayor, we do apologize to the council. It was discussed, could we delay? In fact, Doug and I talked and we talked to Tab. We did not want to send this to you that quickly. It is one of those situations where we are trying to get this park open and this was beyond our control or we wouldn't have sent it to you at this time. So we do offer apologies for it, but it was beyond our control.
Item twelve, resolution twenty, uh, oh two, twenty twenty-three, Peneerall Hazard.
Whereas the City of Hopkinsville has experienced damage from severe thunderstorms, severe winter storms, tornadoes and flooding on many occasions in the past century resulting in property loss, loss of life, economic hardships and threats to public health and safety. And whereas the Peneerall Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan has been comprehensively reviewed and updated by the staff of the Peneerall Area Development District, the members of the Peneerall Regional Hazard Mitigation Council and the people of the community. And whereas the plan recommends many hazard mitigation actions that will protect the people and property affected by the natural hazards that face the Peneerall Area Development District. And whereas public meetings were held as required by law, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville that the Peneerall Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan has hereby been adopted as an official plan of the Peneerall Counties and the jurisdictions within Caldwell, Christian, Crenston, Hopkinsville, Livingston, Lyon, Muhlenberg, Todd and Trigg. The respective officials identified in the strategy of the plan are hereby directed to implement the recommended actions assigned to them. These officials will report quarterly on their activities, accomplishments and progress to the Peneerall Hazard, Regional Hazard Mitigation Council. The Peneerall Regional Hazard Mitigation Council will provide annual progress reports on the status of implementation of the plan to the mayor and city council of the City of Hopkinsville.
So moved.
Travis? Amy, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, moving on. Other, number thirteen, any other comments? All right, moving on from that. Councilman comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, just real quick, um, I'm, I'm the storm wa- I'm on the, uh, solid waste board.
Yes.
And just to let everybody know, I've been talking the, the last couple of days with our director out there, Richard Hopper. Um, we've got a lot of debris from these storms Friday. That is a historic storm. And I just want to kind of, you know, let everybody know that, that, um, where we're at right now, according to, uh, Mr. Hopper, and I don't want to speak for anybody, um, but just our conversation yesterday and today is we're running the boom trucks, the, the big claw trucks on ten hour shifts. Um, and as of, I think I talked to him probably about one o'clock today, they were still on the Monday route. Um, there is a lot of debris out there. So, you know, be, be patient with these folks. If you are cutting up stuff at home, um, be sure you're kind of judging how, how long you're leaving some of these limbs and, and these things. Cause you know, there's a safety aspect. You don't, don't leave a whole, you know, twenty foot trunk of a tree. Those need to be cut up. Um, and I, and I say that, uh, because I've seen it. Um, and, and one thing, and, and me and, me and Mr. Hopper talked on this briefly and we know there, there's a lot of stuff and, and people have had a lot of damage and things. But one thing to remember, you know, the way we kind of do things, if you have a professional company out there, they are actually supposed to be hauling that off. No different than as a contractor, when I work on somebody's house, I'm responsible for my debris removal. That's not necessarily, you know, what, what that's for. We, we're doing the best we can to get to everything as quick as we can. Um, but bear with us. We're, we're going to get to you. It may sit there a while. We're just, we're doing the best we can. Um, I, I, I think I talked with, on, on a separate note, I talked with Jeff Hurd on, on HES, um, on Saturday, and he said in thirty-three years of, of working in, in this field, that's the most trees he's ever seen on the ground at one time from one storm in thirty-three years. So, uh, I, and, and on that note, I, I want to personally thank the lineman. I have a few of them in my family. Um, talked to my niece on, on Saturday. Her husband went to work, uh, Friday morning and he got home at five o'clock Saturday afternoon and he was worn out. So, uh, just a little update for you on the, uh, solid waste thing and, uh, getting your debris up and another thank you to the lineman that were out there for, for several hours. Thank you.
Any other councilman comments?
No, as, as has been said, we all could say this, but it's just, uh, our thanks and gratitude to all of those first responders and people that have been working so hard, you know.
Thank you. Anyone else that will move to item fifteen? I need a motion to move into closed session.
So moved. Second.
And the, the record.
Motion.
Pursuant to. That motion needs to specify that we're going into closed session for discussion of economic development proposal under KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one G, pending litigation under KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one C and property acquisition under KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one B.
Okay.
Second.
Travis and Jamie. All right.
All in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move into closed session. All right. We'll move into closed session.
Closed session, so we were moving on to item 16 adjournment. Uh, Ms. Amy.
Okay, this is short and sweet. Uh, this is a quote by President John Adams. "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." And that is my motion that we adjourn.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.